Thank you very much, and that brings us to our special report tonight, Budget Hearing One. Turn it over to Dr. Donahue.
Yeah. This officially kicks off our budget year, and I'm going to let Greg get right to his presentation, but I want the community to know that in terms of all of the preparation work that we've done for this budget, we've maintained actually exactly the same values that served us so well for my last three budgets and the ones that Jackie proposed prior to that. So our goal is to maintain academic excellence in virtually every area for our students and give them opportunities for high achievement, to maintain the conservative fiscal management style that's worked so well for us. This budget will be extremely conservative in the way that the past ones had, and at the same time to anticipate future needs because we don't want to be caught in a situation where we make decisions today to save money that end up costing us more money in the future. So we will be taking care of our buildings, we will be taking care of our transportation, and we'll do all of that within the confines of a conservative budget. All of this leads to the ultimate value, which is to create stability for our residents and taxpayers. We don't want to be in a position where we're not taking care of important capital expenses and we end up with a tax hike, a tax spike in the future. Our goal is, we don't think we can bring the taxes much lower, but our goal is to maintain them at a very steady and predictable rate. I think that's good for everyone's budget planning, we think it's good for home values, and we think when people are looking at houses in this community, they should be able to predict what the taxes will be. And finally, this creates essentially a chemistry or a winning combination of excellent education, high home values, and a low true tax rate for our community. That's what's gone into preparing this budget as in our past previous ones. So I'll turn it over to Greg to start.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Scott.
The budget season, to Scott, actually, that's true, sorry.
There are three members of the board that are the Budget Committee, Scott, Michael, and Joyce, and they love doing this, and we love having to do it. I am going to turn on that projector as well, so it's going to be your face guy, excuse me.
I'll get a slide over there. Here, you're going to the line.
How are you?
Good. The other one. Okay, so before Greg talks through the financial trends, we just wanted to take a couple of minutes to outline the process, and the process will be very similar to prior years, and it's designed to maximize transparency and to allow the community input every step of the way. Today, we'll hear from the Pitzabels, so we'll get a better sense of the needs for each building in the district, and we'll start our budget hearing process that way, which is very natural. And then on March 1st, the administration will present the budget to the board. On the 15th and the 22nd of March, the second and third hearing, those are important dates because they're a forum for additions and deletions in the budget, so for any community member that has a view on a specific component of the budget, those are good meetings to be at. Then there's a fourth budget hearing on the 12th, then we adopt on April 27th, and then one more hearing until the big day on May 17th when we have our vote. So in terms of just the guidelines that we try to follow, clearly, we want to be consistent with the board goals that we have set earlier this year. We want to be mindful of the fact that we have enrollment trends that we've talked about about, I guess, one or two board meetings ago, we had a thorough report that was done that showed enrollment declines happening throughout the district, as is the case in many communities in Westchester, especially it'll start to hit as we go out in time, the middle school and the high school. We want to maintain programs so that a kindergartner has the same opportunity that a high school student has today, and obviously, figure out ways to tweak our programs to continue to improve them, and then to be thoughtful on the staffing front, and unfortunately, we do have to follow state mandates very strictly, and there are a lot of them, and so that's a big component of the budget that we cannot escape. So in terms of the approach to the budget as well, we want to do it analytically, we want to use data, granular data, to build up a budget, so we look at prior years and we think about all the different inputs that go into the equation. We don't only think about revenue and expenses, but also about our debt service and our balance sheet going forward, and as Bill mentioned, it's important to think through the CapEx requirements, the facilities, making sure that our buildings continue to be invested in over time so that we don't have very large expenses in the future that we can avoid by just regular maintenance. So I think that's a synopsis of the guidelines and the process, and with that, I would turn it over to Greg.
Thank you. Just so the public's aware that we do use Board Docs, and part of Board Docs, there's a public section, and this presentation in its entirety is on Board Docs, so it can be viewed and tomorrow or late tomorrow, this will also be on our website under Board of Education, under Budget, and it will say Budget Hearing One, Fiscal Trend Analysis. So anybody that wants to look at this is more than welcome to look at it, print it, call me, ask questions, what have you. The purpose of the trend analysis is exactly that, is to look at trends and see if they give us any kind of indication of potential financial shortcomings or things that we need to be more mindful of. When we do the trend analysis, we try to break down how we look at it to very basic elements of our budget. We look at the Consumer Price Index, which drives a lot of our costs, inflation, the enrollment projections, which we've mentioned a few times, salary information, which relates to the contracts we have with our three unions, which also includes benefit information. As you know, most of our costs are related to salary and benefits, and finally, debt service, which also has a large impact on our budget. This slide has been fairly similar. In recent years, we see a steady decline in our enrollment as it's projected by our demographer. Ironically, some of these children that are listed here haven't been born yet that are included in this bar chart. The demographer takes many different data elements and gives us the best estimate on what will happen over time. So the trend is downward overall, and we have seen a change from what the demographer has said in the past, so this is something we take into account. We talk about staffing, class sizes, and other impacts on the educational program. Taking that same chart and breaking it down by building, this also is a 10-year look at it, five years of actual and five years projected, as all these slides are. What it shows is that the high school still is going to be quite, quite large in terms of enrollment. My little pointer doesn't come on. I'll go over. Sometimes it's easy to use the old-fashioned way. We look at the enrollment by building, this is where we are right now. There is a countdown, it's called Bed's Day, and that's our official enrollment for the year, and as you can see for the high school, it does continue to track downwards, but it's still 826 children are projected to be there next year. All the other schools show something similar, there's just very modest change between each of the years. So it makes it difficult for budgeting because we're not losing a third grade class, we're not losing a 12th grade class, we're losing pieces of kids all throughout the district, not pieces of kids, but children throughout the district. Not an easy to manage basis. Be careful what you say. Gets me in trouble a lot. There is a projection, Wampus, Wampus is going to have a slight increase from 540 to 544. Once again, these are projections. This is our largest part of the budget, and what we try to do here in the middle section is the actual budget for the current year and what's happened for total salaries and how they relate as a percent of budget. The bottom section is employee benefits, and also how they relate to the total budget and the two combined, what percent of the budget they make. So you see over time that our salaries stay roughly around 54, 53, 54 percent. They are coming down slightly because some of our costs are increasing. You can see that increase when you look at the 20 percent back in 2011, 12 for employee benefits going up to 27 percent of the budget. What's happening, that's really the creep of health insurance, and in the projection that I used, I used 5 percent increase for health insurance per year. We are going to get a slight relief next year for ERS and TRS rates, which will help. We also have very favorable contracts with all of our unions that go for the next three years, and I just take those out like nothing's going to change. This model also assumes that there'll be no staff changes, no increases or decreases, everyone stays, and everything stays as it is, it's a straight line, which we know is not totally accurate. So what the idea is for a projection is to try to be as, I'll say, generic as possible and don't be as granular, I like that word, try to be as general as possible so we get a good feel for what's happening. So this slide shows salaries holding fairly constant, benefits increasing primarily because of health insurance, and overall, the budget stays between 76 and 79 percent of the total budget or salaries and benefits. Debt service, we've been through this several times, this is more of a review for everyone. The blue line here, right in the middle here is where we are right now, this is the current year, so you have five years looking back and five years looking forward. This large blue line is the actual debt service, this is our costs, and it drops down towards the end, and these bars inside of here are the different pieces of funds that we're using. We were using fund balance from the debt service fund, this red line. If you notice, all of a sudden, this just goes away, there's just a tiny little piece here, and that's the current year, that'll be spent down. So the debt service fund came from savings from our large capital project, by law required to use that to offset debt, so it stays in a separate fund outside of the general fund. That money as of right now is literally all spent down, so there's zero in that. What's replacing that is funds from the Insurance Reserve. This is this green line, and you see once again, all of a sudden, it's gone again. So the idea of the Insurance Reserves, over this five-year period, will be appropriating that to offset debt service, but in five years, that's gone. To make up that, when that's gone, in 2019, 20, there's a new bar here, maybe you have a ton of color, I can't see the color either, it might be purple, and then it's funny, from the Retirement Contributions Reserve. After that, we don't need any additional supports because the actual debt service drops significantly, and it stays that way until the debt is exhausted. So what it does is the trend for what we're actually taxing for, this is just a trend line from the computer, is this red line, so we've been able to bring our debt service down, which creates other opportunities for the district to take on other initiatives without increasing taxes.
Can you just go back one second, Greg?
Sure.
I think I just want to say, you know, we often hear the district seems to be very well managed financially, and our residents have not experienced crazy tax spikes. This slide is essentially what that's about. Everything on there is by design, we're not using these funds accidentally or because we're desperate. The design was to maintain taxes at a stable rate, even while we had an extremely high, probably one of the highest in the county, Greg?
Yes.
Bonds, our mortgage was extremely high, we did two construction projects that affected all four school buildings, both projects affected all four school buildings. That was a lot of borrowing, and this slide really tells how we managed our debt, and the reason we're in good financial shape isn't because of how we manage our income or expenses, it's how we manage our debt.
Thank you, Bill. The way it was designed without these additional payments coming from other sources than current taxes is it was designed to step down over time.
Right.
Create opportunities to either spend at this level and spend on different program costs or other needs without incurring any additional taxes, but because we had these reserves, it made sense to bring this cost down to, this is the net, when we get down to what the actual plan is at this point, and we look at this every year in detail, so this isn't, this isn't in stone. And debt service makes up approximately 7 percent of our costs. The other two small pieces, you can see that these don't make up a lot, these are costs for furniture, equipment, other capital expenditures, and BOSI's, 3 percent. It does drop because the budget continues to increase, but there isn't a big dollar change in these over time, 2 million, 2 to 1 million 5, and then from BOSI's makes up the lion's share of this, 10 million 7, and these go up by inflation. I used 2 percent as an example of what these costs look like over time, looking forward, it goes to 16 percent of the budget, so not a really significant cost driver in these two areas. Add them all up, this is what's happened, these first four boxes show what we actually spent over four years, this blue box is the current year's budget, and this is what, with all the assumptions we talked about, this is what the increases look like, which they're modest compared to some of the costs we've seen in the past. Once again, these are driven by reduction in TRS, ERS, and reduction here, which is significant, which is the debt service, it drops off significantly in 2021. In reality, when your debt expires, unfortunately, you usually take on more debt because you're going to need to do some, probably, some capital improvements at that point. So you never, just like your house, you get done paying for the roof, guess what you need? You need a new roof. So those things, same as a school building, except they're much larger, 0.3 percent is very unlikely to happen. In terms of balancing our budget, to say, how will we pay for this? Once again, it's four years of actual, the budget's in blue, and then we go through the projection to make this work. What we see in this over time is that we still remain dependent on property tax, which is no surprise, star revenue continues to decline, we don't actually budget for star revenue because it's considered part of real property taxes, so it looks like there's a real big jump in property taxes from 72 to 97, 77, 3, but in reality, a portion of that is star reimbursement, and star program, they're not talking about eliminating that, so it still will exist. We have the benefit in our district of having pilot payments, the pilot payments do start to shift around, we can see it out here, there's a drop, it's been about 4 percent and dropping a little bit, sorry, 4 percent consistently through, and all of a sudden, here's a significant change here. This is when the IBM pilot will expire. In all reality, that'll be renegotiated, so that would change these numbers, and then you see what happens out here, we have some changes in that, so that'll be something to look very carefully at pilots as they expire and are renegotiated. Swiss Re's the other one that comes off out here in 2020, 21, and Anglo Berman is coming online and giving us more pilot money each year. So we have three pilots right now, dropped to two, and then down to one if nothing changes. And once again, I do this model as if nothing's going to change.
Greg, you talked to the town recently to prepare this for the pilots?
They're talking to IBM right now, we'll be involved at the appropriate time for IBM, that's the first one, so I know Ira and Bill talked to, and you do too, the town may as not, so that's something that we'll have to keep a close eye on. This is a different way of looking at tax levy cap. What I try to do is instead of going through that huge table of numbers, make it into a chart. The tax levy cap is known as a 2 percent tax levy cap, which is here, this is our actual tax levy cap, every school district for the last four years, every school calculates its own tax levy cap independently, and it's made up of these four major areas, the tax base growth factor, change in pilot payments, exemptions, and the Consumer Price Index. What this shows is that of these four components, this is the impact of it. So for example, the tax levy cap for the first year, the tax levy cap, we calculated we could increase our taxes by 2.05, we increased our tax levy by 1.72, we were 228,603 dollars under what we could have taxed and still had a 50 percent vote. Obviously, you can see the numbers below that, we stayed under the cap each year, but the cap moves around, it was 2.05, 3.61, two years in a row, and 2.2 for the current year that we're in. Each year, we've stayed under the cap again. You can see the largest portion that makes up the cap is this purple here, and that's the tax base growth factor. This is, no, excuse me, sorry, I'm tailing the color. That's the Consumer Price Index, so what happens is, this current year that we're starting to calculate, CPI is supposed to be close to zero, so this is going to go away in our ability to increase taxes, raise taxes. It's a concern. The blue is the tax base growth factor, you can see that's gone up each year, 0.41, 0.51, 0.71, and 0.91 percent increase. This isn't changes in assessments, this is increases and additions in bricks and mortar, so this is new buildings going up, which also, it can't go below zero, so always be either zero or a positive number. There's also the pilots, the pilots are interesting, they reduce the amount that we can increase our taxes each year, but if we go back to the other chart, each year, our pilots have been increasing. When your pilot revenue increases, your ability to tax decreases. That makes sense, so it always decreases what we can actually, what we can actually tax for, so there's a slight pull-down of our tax levy cap. And finally, the exemptions. The exemptions are things like if the TRS or ERS rates go up by more than 2 percent, you can take an exemption or add on to your taxes for that, that's happened a couple times, and also, the net effect of capital expenses and debt service. So the state says, we'll allow you to levy taxes for what it actually costs your taxpayers, so you can have that as a given, that if you're going to pay $5 million in taxes net, you can increase your tax levy by $5 million to pay for that. So they want you to pay your bills for capital expenses. So the message is, it's a complicated formula, it's not 2 percent, it varies every year, and we've stayed below what we could tax each year because the way that we bill our budget is based on student need and not what the state wants us to do in terms of the tax levy cap calculation. But once again, this year will be a challenge because the CPI will be very close to zero. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but this is looking at how the tax levy is actually allocated between the four townships, 85 percent of our...
Greg, if you talk about the equalization rate now, you can never do it again this year.
I'm trying to dance around, I'm trying to dance around it.
Choose what you want to do.
It's here. So what the equalization rate represents is the percent of assessed value in relation to the full value, so this number gets divided into this to create this number, this is divided by this to get that number.
Well said.
It's so easy. Bottom line is that theoretically, if all the property was to be sold in all the towns today, North Castle would sell for $4 billion, almost like the Bellato, but $4 billion, $4 billion, and therefore, it represents 85 percent of the market value of all the school district properties within our school district. Therefore, North Castle pays 85 percent of the tax levy as their amount. That's about all you need to know. These two are very small, Newcastle and Bedford, 0.58 percent, 0.42 percent, very small amount, and Mount Pleasant makes up 13 percent. So that's how the taxes are apportioned. Looking at, this is the last slide for this item, looking at what has happened now, saying with this, the new equalization rates versus last year, just based on equalization rates, there's always a shift in taxes, we always take a look at it because sometimes it can be double-digit changes. This year, it's 0.3 percent decrease, 0.3 percent increase, there's usually this traditional swap between North Castle and Mount Pleasant in terms of property values, and Newcastle and Bedford usually offset each other, and they're usually equal, but sometimes these numbers have been high as 13 percent. So we look at it just in case there's a shift in taxes, nothing to do with the school board, but on what's happened with market value. We call it total value, but it's really what the market value is for each of the townships. We always compare ourselves against the rest of the county. The true value tax rate is the market value divided by the actual taxes per thousand. Byram Hills' true value tax rate for the current year is 16.19 dollars per thousand of full value. That way, you can compare yourself to other school districts. There are 54 school districts in the region that BOSI analyzes, the range is from $39.23 per thousand to $9.38 per thousand. They're ranked number one, unfortunately, Mount Vernon, so that's not a good ranking, and the lowest is 54. Byram Hills ranks 45th, so there are, 44 school districts have a higher true tax rate than Byram Hills, and only nine have a lower rate.
Greg, we've been very consistent on that, and I think every year we say it, but I think it really bears saying, like, being in the bottom quartile year after year, I think in my 210 years in the Board of Education, we've really stayed there, and I think that's really a tribute to the way that we work on this in your office, but I think that, to me, is really the true apples and orange comparison, keeping apples to apples.
It really is.
In terms of a school district, again, I hope, members of the community, if you're watching this and when you get the budget materials down the road, you really pay attention to that, because of all the comparisons and analyses we do, you want to know how Byram Hills fits in to your neighbors. This is how we fit into your neighbors, that we fit into your neighbors in Chappaqua and Edmond and everything else, and this is why we think the Byram Hills education is incredibly good value, in every way measurable, but certainly, financially, we're really where we, where we are and where we're going to stay, hopefully, for the foreseeable future, but this is really a very important slide, I think.
Thank you. The other element to look at is ability to pay. This is based on adjusted gross income, the average is $351,000, and we rank fifth highest in terms of average income out of 54 districts, and median is $85,000, we're the eighth out of 54 districts. In terms of the wealth calculation per pupil, this is a number that's used to generate state aid, we have $634,650, that'd be income and property behind every student, so we're the fifth highest, so in terms of actual, what the state considers wealth out of the 54 districts, and the only caveat is because of the wealth, it results in low state aid, which we see that is between 3 and 4 percent, so that's the downside of the wealth, we don't receive a lot of state aid. And once again, this is the budget development process, March 1st is when we pull out the whole budget and all of its pieces, and then break it down and start to talk about a lot of the components. There's plenty of opportunity for public input and board comments and discussion, leading to the budget vote on May 17th. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Greg. I just wanted to say to the public, two of those dates to really note is March 15th and March 27th, Budget Hearing Two, Budget Hearing Three, that's when the public really has the opportunity to be heard on the budget, so I encourage you to look at the budget online, comment if you have questions then, that's the time. Yes, Ira?
I just want to add just a thing to that, people in the community say, you know, when can we make suggestions to the budget? Because that's it, you know, this is the way it works around the state, those are the two hearing dates where if you have a budgetary suggestion on a light item or something you think we ought to carry, we don't carry, once we're finished with Budget Hearing Two and Three, we're basically finished in terms of our overall analysis of the adds and deductions of the budget. We may consider, will consider in budget session what we've kicked around during Budget Hearing Two and Three, but once we come to Budget Hearing Four, we're not considering new items to the budget, and so if you want to communicate with the district office, communicate with a board member, communicate with a board president, please... member, communicate with a board president, please do so, keeping in mind the March fifteenth and March twenty-second dates, because we're really sort of bound by that.
And of course, come in at any time and ask questions.
You're always welcome.
Right up and right. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, well done. Thank you so much, Greg. And from the public, any comments, questions? Okay. Back to Bill?
Yeah, just supposedly my overview, I think I gave it before we began, so I'll be really brief. What you saw tonight is our focus on a five-year trend analysis, and this is probably the critical tool in how we build the budget. Five-year trend analysis tells us where things are going and gives us a chance to make corrections so that we stay within the values that I stated at the beginning of the meeting. What you just saw is the reason why we've been able to stay under the tax cap. And in fact, return, we haven't even maxed out the tax cap. Over the last four years, we've come in to save well over a half million dollars from what it would be if we had come in at the top of the tax cap. Last thing I would like to mention is, any budget should also, well, any budget should also talk about what initiatives are going on. The critical one for us is technology. We've been talking at these meetings a lot about STEAM, which is our version of STEM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. We have quite a lot going on, including a plan this year to implement STEAM curriculum for every student in every grade level every year. That does certainly include some new costs, but those will be included in the budget, and we will still come in under the tax cap. So more to come in the other budget hearings. I won't belabor it now.
Thank you. And now, you've been patiently waiting. We are looking forward to hearing from our principals.
I know tonight, Dr. Powderly traveled the furthest to get here and has the furthest to go. Do you want to go first?
That would be, that would be, I apologize. We've been two minutes late, but-
Three minutes.
And I believe, if you count two-hundred-and-twenty years, I think it's two-sixty.
It's not the age, it's the mileage difference.
Alexander Hamilton's birthday would have been two-hundred-sixtieth yesterday, so.
That's it.
You knew it.
I did. I think we went to law school with him.
Basically, going along with Dr. Don, who says, I'm proposing a budget that is basically the same as it was last year. When we prepare budgets, basically for curriculum items, the curriculum at the state level is in a bit of flux, being reconsidered for several curriculum things in the English Language Arts and the Mathematics, depending upon their committees that also look at the state assessments. So we have money set aside. It's the same, there's a one percent increase, and that's because of an expenditure in one department that was ten thousand dollars more than this year, which has to do with the service of someone in our Fine Arts Department. So that's the, that's the big increase. As far as the Language Arts, we always are looking for new books. We have some new titles that we'll be using. There's some money in there for that. And also, in the vocabulary program, we tried a totally electronic vocabulary development program in seventh grade, and that's working. And the eighth grade prefers to keep the print version of vocabulary so they can add list, words to the list. And the Science, there's some money there for science equipment, but the next-gen science program, they haven't totally adopted it yet, so we're, we've set aside some money in there. I think that when you look at the budgets, you'll see that, you'll see a twenty-seven percent increase in some and a twenty-six percent in the next department. That's because we used to be on a five-year cycle to replace textbooks. We're off that cycle now, and as Dr. Don said, it depends upon what kind of technology are available for the, for the different curriculum. We added the robotics. We've had a great deal of help from the foundation on some of the things, and we're very grateful for that. And as far as the budget goes, it's basically the same. The one thing I'm especially proud of, you look at the library budget, there've been some transfers in there to electronic. For instance, we have twenty-six Kindles. We have almost twelve, I think it's twelve-hundred titles that are now available on those Kindle books. We have a tech squad that we use and who are a group of students who go around and help show the other students how to use the technology. You see a little sixth grader go up to an eighth grade classroom and teach them about WeVideo, which is, and so that goes on also. So the budget, as Dr. Don says, it allows us to keep our programs as rigorous and as stimulating and as rig, and as, they're just good. They're just very excellent programs. Questions?
I guess one very quick question, just on Science and Social Studies, given that they're still a little bit in flux. Any sense of when, timing-wise, they lock it down and then when they do? Is it, is it, do you anticipate, I mean, it's hard to know for sure, but do you think it's big dollars or is it just small dollars to try to satisfy?
It's small dollars initially, but it's enough that if, well, for instance, in the Social Studies, the standards, they think they're going to accept them, but they haven't done that officially yet. I serve on the Government Relations Committee for the State Association that I belong to, and I know there's going to be several committees. They haven't decided who's going to be on those committees yet, but I guarantee it'll be representing all, all publics that we have and the teachers and whoever. So there really is nothing coming out. You know, they have no timeline. They just have a long list of things that they have to do with no timeline, as you're probably well aware of. So, but we put so many aside in the Science, I think it's about six thousand dollars for equipment if we have to, if we change some of those programs. Social Studies, it's a little easier, you know. We do some of the authentic assessments in Social Studies, but, you know, history is history. So it's, we do a lot of, as right now, we're in the midst of the dramatic monologues for our Revolutionary War, you know. They come in costume and they give five minutes dissertation, dissertations and orations that they've memorized, so. So history is history. As a history major, I can say that.
Is that what the original cast or they wrote this?
You know, I was walking around today, the teacher, I walked into the English class, she kind of, she said I was one of the students of Aristotle, so I think they thought I was taught with Aristotle.
Yeah, I was there and you read it.
Right before I got on the Board of Education. You're the Constitution Board of the Board.
I have my toe in the back.
We're happy with the support, we're more than happy with the support the board has given us and the foundation, so we're, you know, we're blessed. So we thank you.
Thank you, Evan. And who's next? How are we doing this? The next furthest traveler?
You want to point to someone, Evan?
Let's see.
Me, I don't.
We're all leaving together at this thing.
Why not? I thought Evan was going last. Furthest traveler rule suddenly just-
And the first shall be last, and the last shall be first.
First, before you start, I just want to congratulate you and the obviously Intel Science people on the Intel Science results, which we'll talk about that when they come to the board, but, I mean, we seem to take this as our divine right to have Intel semifinalists. We know that's not true.
No, it's absolutely not.
But, and we know how hard it is, but this was an outstanding result for Byram Hills. And I was just mentioning to Joyce and to Bill, that I saw on Channel Twelve News, the interviews that were done with the Intel semifinalists at the high school. I thought they were great. I thought the students just showed themselves beautifully, and I thought they were, and the way they presented, what they spoke about, their, you know, their projects, it really was a very positive event for Byram Hills, so congratulations. Please congratulate the students and the faculty on that for us. I thought it was just a wonderful thing to see.
No, we're really proud of that. And, no, we're proud of every, every senior that actually gets to their Intel submission, which for every kid is a, is a challenge. And this year, we actually had, you know, Simmons-Westinghouse finalists, which we don't think that we've ever had. We have three or four students who are finalists in the Neuroscience competition. So we're trying to expand also the kids' abilities to compete and to display their work and, you know, the original knowledge that they've generated, so. You know, this budget for the high school is similar to what Dr. Powderly said. We're not, there's no major changes. It's pretty consistent from a dollar value. We do decrease by about fifty kids next year, and it's the start of a little decline for the high school that we're going to experience. I think the important thing at, at the high school is, and for everyone to understand, is we're not just about meeting graduation standards and requirements, we're about exceeding them. And that's the, those are the opportunities that the budget offers our students. You know, this year, we have about forty-three percent of the seniors who are taking their fifth year of foreign language, you only need two to graduate. We have ninety-two percent of the senior class have taken four years of math and science. I believe sixteen percent of them have taken another year. And when I say another year, they might take two math classes at the same time. Twenty-two percent have taken a fifth year of science. So it's not just about meeting standards for our kids, it's about exceeding them and letting them explore and really get involved in whatever area it might be. I'm just highlighting the math and science because it's, English and Social Studies are four-year obligations for kids to graduate. But in a lot of places, kids after, you know, after they hit their three-year mark, they start doing other things, or they take less classes. It's not the way it works at Byram Hills High School. You know, last year's graduating class, we had an absurd number, eighty-one percent of the senior classes accepted Tier One and Two colleges, which are, you know, we've talked about this number before. It's around the top twelve or thirteen percent using the Baron's Guide. More telling, though, is that ninety-five percent of our middle twenty percent of students, so we've been tracking our middle twenty percent of students for about five or six years now, maybe a little bit longer. And that's an incredible number. So thirty-eight out of the forty students we track were accepted at Tier One, Two Colleges. They may have matriculated somewhere else, but those numbers are pretty staggering. And this budget's going to support that and continue to allow kids to have those opportunities to push themselves in any number of areas, and also to support the diversity of our learners. Today, at my principal's coffee, we highlighted sort of the continuum of learners that we have within the building. From, we had a presentation by one of our Authentic Science Research seniors, who wasn't a semifinalist, but it's incredibly impressive. And also a presentation around our new Language Communications Program, and highlighting for folks that for most of us, we only get to see a slice of the pie that's Byram Hills High School. You have your two or three children, one child, you get to see what it is that they experience, those teachers, those programs. But as a school, we have an obligation to educate and to respect a huge diversity of learners. And we do that in a variety of ways, through things like Authentic Science Research, through our AP programs, through things like Perspectives in Literature, through allowing for a whole host of extracurricular activities, like Thirty-One Varsity Sports, our three annual drama productions, students serving soldiers, our debate team, all these opportunities for kids. And then we also have our Language Communications for students who have special needs, our Flexible Support Program, many specialized courses and supports. And this budget's going to continue to provide for those. And, you know, one of the nice things that I think, sitting around here and having gone through, this is my eighth year as principal, going through some difficult economic times, is we did, we lived true to that mission of not losing a single program, and in fact, enhancing programs to meet the needs of kids through responsible management and fiscal plan, which has been wonderful.
Chris, a question. There are two new classes in the high school. Are those, would you say, just enhancements of classes? There's the, well, it's actually Change of Physics AP.
Right. That's actually just, it's-
It's just a change?
Yeah, I mean, it's from Physics A, which was sort of a homegrown curriculum, to the Physics One curriculum, which is an AP. What we realized over this year, we had some, some transition with physics faculty, that we wanted to make sure our curriculum was more standardized and aligned with the national curriculum. And in fact, our Physics A and the Physics One curriculum are almost identical as far as the topics that are taught. And there's a lot more resources out there, too, for the, for the AP curriculum, so that's one change. And then the Linguistics, Linguistics course. And that's an enhancement, you know, based on some of the recommendations and some of the things we've been working through with the World Languages over the years. And we're interested to see the student interest.
Okay. So it's not, it's not really a change that we're going to notice in budget?
No. Physics is just going to be really a moniker issue, Physics One, AP Physics One, or Physics A. We may see a shift, perhaps some kids might be more drawn to it because it has an AP title, while others might shy away from it. But it'll just be a flux between Regions Physics and the Advanced or Accelerated Physics, which won't have any budgetary implications. We're just interested to see how that plays out over time.
Thank you. Any questions?
You are starting a downward enrollment period, which will continue now for a good number of years. I think fifty is probably nothing to get all that concerned about, but we do know where the numbers are headed. And I assume that over the next year or two, some long-range planning's going to take, at least begin or continue to address how we're going to handle this sharp decrease as we're expecting in the next three, five, seven years.
Yeah, we've been engaged in conversation because the demographic predictions have been there for-
Yeah, wow.
-many, many years. And, you know, they seemed, like, even though they seemed that there were some things that were foreign in the future, we have been having discussions at the principal level, at the district level. You know, in a high school, it's not like the elementary schools where twenty-five kid, twenty-five third graders equals a section. There's a lot more variance as far as schedules, so.
Could be an effect on electives? I mean, I don't know, but it's, it's coming.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
I suppose, you know, to that point, too, if you're saying that, you're seeing that the children aren't, they're, they're taking a full load of classes, so that, you know, kind of offsets some of that as well.
Yeah, very, there was a time when Dr. Don started as an assistant principal, and it was a guidance chair, it was common for kids to, especially in their junior and senior year, to be done at eleven, twelve-thirty, right? Have their last two periods. Two or three free periods, because they were done. There wasn't really a curriculum for them to continue to pursue, but through Dr. Don's efforts as the principal and our continued efforts, and the expectations of the kids in the community, kids take full schedules. Until they get into college now, about now, a lot of them are trying to bail out as many classes as they can, but we generally don't want that happening.
Good. Thank you. Any questions from the public? Okay. And let's move on to Wampus. What about elementary school? Okay. Okay. I guess. Wampus? Okay. Wampus has been carefully and strategically monitoring the curriculum mandates in terms of the standards from the state over the past couple of years. So when the Common Core rolled out, we were aware that we really had to look at literacy as a framework in terms of getting a cohesive sort of structure in the building, as well as the math aligning with the Common Core standards. So the past couple of years, we've really focused on literacy and on math. Happily, math has stabilized now. We've been doing the modules for a couple of years, the resources that we needed to front-load that framework. We've already passed that through budget two years ago. This year, our, the bulk of the budget has been geared towards the new literacy framework of LitLife, and we've been getting the resources needed to support that. So going forward, the budget that I'm proposing for next year, we're looking now at the Science and at the Social Studies. Both of them are probably the next, the next group of curriculum and standards that are going to be adopted in one way, shape, or form. Social Studies is probably more urgent at this point because there is some pretty specific framework that's been set out, and it does have a good three-year to four-year rollout plan, unlike the literacy and the math standards. So we have the luxury of really carefully planning strategically. So in the budget that I'm proposing, we're putting in funds for supporting a three-year rollout of Social Studies, looking at what are the most immediate resources that we would need to get a jump start, and then what would that look like the second year and the third year when we're into the full implementation. The Science, it has not been adopted yet, but there's a draft that recently just came out. It won't be called Next Gen, it's got a whole nother acronym because New York is proposing their own spin on the Next Gen. So it's New York State Science, and I'm not really good at the rest of the acronym. I don't know if you know what it is, Tim. But the thinking is that that might be adopted sometime in the next couple of months. We've been very proactive, knowing that this was probably coming somewhat close to the Next Gen standards, and we've realized what our gaps are, especially in the area of engineering. So we've been sort of working on developing curricular units for engineering, looking at some of the other areas that have ramped up a little bit in the Next Gen, and considering what is it that we're going to need to get all of that off to a good start. So some of the money in the budget that I'm proposing is also geared towards the Science and Technology. And I'm adding Technology along with that because we are really looking at it as STEAM, as sort of a holistic look at integrating curriculum and providing kids with inquiry-based units and lessons so that they've got more interaction with their own learning. units and lessons so that they've got more interaction with their own learning. And that's kind of our vision over the next several years, is how do we evolve to that, the 21st century skills? And in that evolution, what do we need in terms of a budget? So the budget for, for next year that we're proposing has a focus on the social studies and science. The total budget is going down about eight percent, and a lot of that is because of the fact that we had a big allocation for this year for the LitLife program. There's an incredible amount of books that really make that a rich framework. It's a one-shot kind of big-ticket item, and then it's done. So after this year, we don't have that need for that, that big-ticket amount. So that explains why it's down, why the budget's down. It's not anything to do with cutting program or cutting anything else. It's really a result of, we got our LitLife resources, now we can move on to other things. With technology, we've had the, the advantage and the blessing, as, as Evan said, of the foundation with the one-on-one corresponding Chromebook initiative, and we've been working on what it takes to enhance what we're able to do with the Chromebooks. And those are some minimal costs in terms of site licenses and different kinds of apps and things along that way. We've been expanding a little bit on our coding so that kids have access to more coding in our tech program. They, they started with, they'd been doing robotics for a number of years and cublets, but now we're getting into more sophisticated cublets. So rather than kids just knowing that there are four kinds of cublets, that one can light up, one can make a noise, one can turn a corner, and one can sense a barrier, we've now expanded and are expanding that to provide a much more sophisticated coding knowledge and ability for the cublets to do things that are much more sophisticated. Basically, our sections are going to stay about the same in terms of, they're going to shift a little bit, but the enrollment isn't going to be that much different at Wampus. And again, as I said, we're really focusing on a five-year plan of looking at how do we evolve and grow and design and purchase for kids to be really prepared for the 21st century, thinking and learning that they need to do. So that's our Wampus budget. And, you know, our commitment is to maintain what we've got and to continue to look at how do we make it better and how do we make it align with what is their future, but we might not know it yet, which is kind of a little bit of a challenge, but we're constantly asking that question.
Yeah, you guys are the first wave.
Yeah.
Really.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you, Deb. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Thanks, Debbie. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy?
And so Comen Hill, in building the Comen Hill budget, I asked myself three things. I have a central focus of maintaining the highest standards for the current kindergarteners. So when you hear Chris talk, we hear what is happening there, that our children will receive that. A question I always go back to when I'm looking at the budget is what do we value at Comen Hill? And the two constituents that I think of first are our children, and after our children are our teachers. So what do we value at Comen Hill? I have to be thinking of the modern learner, and what does the modern learner need? Two very important things that the modern learner will need is critical thinking and problem solving. So children can't do that unless I create a system for them, or we create a system for them, that enables our teachers an atmosphere to themselves, think critically and problem solve. And one area that I've done that is, I've really focused a lot on using teachers to lead professional development sessions in terms of content, pedagogy, instructional knowledge, data assessments. I really let the leaders take the lead on that so that they're forced to think critically and solve problems, collaborate, and communicate with one another. A really good example of this at Comen Hill has been the Patty Initiative. We're in our third cohort of it, and what Patty has done for our faculty, it's really put thinking critically in the hands of the teachers, and they can't just create assessments for the sake of creating assessments. Assessments have to go, be whittled down to assessing what really matters to a child. And one of the assessments, I think you've already heard about, is the Making a Difference assessment. Children are really forced to think about how they can make a difference and how they can impact the life of someone else. So helping my teachers think critically helps them turn around and infuse it into the minds of our youngest learners. And that takes me to our little Googlers, we call them. So at K2, there's a, a new little buzz around the building that we are creating little Googlers. The technology lab does not look like it did twelve months ago, and although we're not a one-to-one school, we, we don't need to be that one-to-one school, we have transformed our technology lab in really simple ways, keeping costs low. The technology lab is no longer an isolated place where children face walls and work on computers. In fact, we're bringing back old-fashioned desks, and children are using the cublets from the BHF, which is what Deb mentioned, to construct, solve problems, work together, think critically. It's a much noisier place, and it's really allowing our students to explore in the technology lab like they've never done before. In fact, computers are at the back of the learning in the tech lab.
It's sort of like Makerspace?
It's like, the technology lab is becoming a Makerspace, and it's, it goes back to just really developing the capacity of my teachers to try new things, to be flexible, to take risks, and to say, you know, I have to think about how I want this to look and try it with my children. And that's just an example of the little Googlers that we're, we're hearing all about. My commitment for the budget really is to build a school system that supports teachers to inquire into things, to adapt their thinking, to identify what needs work, so that they create a perfect practice mentality that helps our children grow and flourish, so that when I send them up fourteen years down the road, out to college, that I have prepared the leaders up tomorrow.
Thank you. Questions?
What school are you from again? Thank you. It's great to see you.
Thanks. All right? There are no other questions. Thank you all so much for joining us. We will not make you stay for the rest of our meeting. You're always welcome to stay, but we can let you know what happens later. You can watch us on TV later.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have tours set up for your schools. We have, we have Wampus this week. Yes, tomorrow, no, Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. We look forward to... Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Should we put in more?
March on.
Okay. One more. All right, we'll continue in a second. Okay.
Everybody was able to get their policies in minutes?
Yeah. I had, I believe the second time he shut up again. And I got it, I got it now.